Let me call to order the Williamsport City Council Meeting of October 25th. Please rise for an invocation by Councilwoman Bonnie Katz, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we come together tonight, we ask that you guide us while we represent all members of our city wisely and fairly, that we recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, that we respect and never forget where we came from, but are willing to listen and accept positive changes. Lord, we do thank you for all that you have blessed us with, and we humbly ask you for your continued love and blessings to give us the strength and guidance for the decisions we make in all that we do. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is approval of City Council Meeting minutes stated October 11th, 2018. Can I have a motion and a second to approve those?
Go ahead.
Here, a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Katz, please.
Mrs. Frank.
I'm sorry. I was still thinking about the great invocation. I was thinking about the great invocation. Mrs. Frank.
I'm ready for take vote.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slatter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for that for this evening, so we'll move right on to our next item, which is appointments. We have an appointment to the Veterans Memorial Park Commission this evening. Is there a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Dennis Bennett?
So moved.
Here, a motion and a second. Standing in place of the mayor this evening is Mr. Pavlik. How are you this evening?
Good, thank you. The mayor's asking me to present the appointment of Dennis James Bennett to the Veterans Memorial Park Commission. Recently, there was a resignation due to a member moving out of the state, so there's a need to fill the vacated seat for the remainder of that term. The commission is recommending the appointment of Dennis James Bennett, a retired Army First Sergeant, to fill the vacated seat, which ends, I believe, in 2019. I believe that the mayor brought the commission's recommendation along with a bio for Mr. Bennett. This was reviewed and discussed amongst the Finance Committee on Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Mr. Allison.
Yes, we did review this at Finance and had a nice conversation with Mr. Bennett and John Markley about the ongoing project there. Mr. Bennett has an extensive resume in the military and served his country with great honor and efficiency, and not that that was any question at all, but it was a pleasure to talk to him and get to know him. And we proved, sent it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Well, we didn't really vote on it, but we do.
We did.
But, Mrs. Katz.
Yes, we voted on it.
Yeah.
Amongst ourselves.
And your impressions, too?
My impressions were, first of all, he has so many letters after everything that he's done. I mean, for someone who is not in the military or understand the military, this is just very impressive. Plus, what was really incredible with this gentleman is his enthusiasm, and I think that's what we're so impressed with, not only what his background is, but what he's going to bring forward. He's already been working on things with John, so I think it's going to be an incredible person to be on this committee. And I hope everybody gets to meet him because he is very impressive.
Other comments or questions? We don't much get the opportunity to thank the Veterans Memorial Park Commission for the work that they do, and I've had a few conversations with John Markley in particular about their planning and now, of course, the execution of their plan and the work that they do. Many of them, of course, have served our nation and take pride in memorializing their colleagues, but now they're serving the city in that capacity, and they're doing a very fine job. Every year, it seems like they add something that real adds real meaning to that park. And so, on behalf, I think, of all the citizens of Williamsport, I want to take the opportunity, not only to welcome the newest member, but also to thank them, all of them, for the work that they do. It's important remembering the soldiers that have kept us who we are as a nation. So, if there are other comments, Mrs. Katz?
What we, we forgot to mention is that, first of all, you have to go up and see what they're doing up there. It's absolutely incredible. And Penn College is helping them build their, would you call it a memorial?
Memorial.
And it's going to be, you know, by the time this is finished, it is so impressive. It really is. I think he said they're working on trying to get a helicopter up there also. So, when it's all said and done, I think, you know, this is going to be incredible. It really is incredible. But I wanted to give the credit with Penn College, and also John Markley, who has put so much time and effort, and he's still selling the bricks, if anybody wants a brick.
And all those that have made donations, it's been people outside those two groups that you just mentioned.
Any further comments? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slatter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the appointment is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution setting City Council meetings dates for 2019. Mrs. Frank.
Resolution setting City Council meeting for the year of 2019. And Mr. White wants to read them all.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening, council.
Let me get a motion and a second first, real quick. Is there a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Here, a motion and a second. Mr. White, how are you this evening?
Thank you, I'm great. Good evening, Council President, Dr. Williamson, members of council. I have for you the resolution setting the City Council meetings for the year of 2019. I am not planning on reading them all unless you want to hear me repeat the word Thursday about 30 times. So, I will present them as they are on the resolution.
This was not reviewed by committee because this was reviewed by all of council as individuals. So, I'll see if there are any further comments or questions. I will pass on one comment that I forgot until right now, but I have my own opinion. This was from Councilwoman Mealy and wondered if continuing the budget sessions at 7:00 instead of 7:30 was still our wish. I think, from her standpoint, it's a scheduling issue. From my standpoint, it's three nights that week. It'd be nice to not be out as late on two of the three nights, so, but I thought I'd bring that up in case other council members agreed with her opinion. Any other comments? Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slatter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, then, is a resolution for a real estate refund. Mrs. Frank.
Real estate refund Paul G. Enterprises, 100 Pine Street.
Are we?
I think there's one before that.
One before that one, if you would. Wayne and Channing.
Wayne and Channing, 309 Brandon Avenue.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
Go ahead.
Here, a motion and a second. Mr. Grimes, how are you this evening?
I'm doing wonderful, thank you. This is for a real estate refund in the amount of $288.15. This is for a property that was destroyed by fire. This is only for five months because the property did sell, so this is for the taxes paid by the previous owner up to the time he sold the property.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slatter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution for a real estate refund for the Paul G. Enterprises.
Real estate refund Paul G. Enterprises.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second?
Go ahead.
Second.
Here, a motion and a second. Mr. Grimes.
Thank you. This is for a refund for Paul G. Enterprises Holiday and Express in the amount of $18,136.36. There is a change of appeal on this property due to assessment appeal, and that was done in 2017, which would be effective for the 2018 year, but we actually had to go through the court system and have an appraisal done, and this is the figure that we ended up with, but since it was originally appealed in 2017, it's effective for the 2018 tax year, so they already paid their taxes at the higher rate, so we have to refund them the difference.
So, a couple of questions that I have on that. Was this a part of a tax abatement program?
It was previously. It still is, actually, and we used a formula, the county, the school district, and the city together, when we discussed this, to take the portion of the increased property value due to the LERTA improvement.
Right.
And then, we kept that percentage, that proportion, the same on the lower assessed value to get the new LERTA figure, which is good for one more year, I believe.
Okay, so they've received tax rebates, basically, as an incentive to help with the development of the project, what, five or six years ago?
Probably been eight years ago.
Yeah, I suppose, given it's a seven-year LERTA, but not, we're talking about a year ago's taxes. And so, they received those tax benefits, and then while they were still receiving those incentives, what you're saying is they appealed the valuation so that they could also further reduce their taxes?
Yes, they claimed that their assessment was too high for their property, for their business, and that went through the first appeal, it was denied, they challenged that in court. A formal appraisal was done.
Okay.
And that resulted in lowering the assessed value of the property.
What was the, if you know, and you might not, do you know what the justification was for the reduced value?
I don't know, aside from the formal appraisal, which is a business appraisal that was done.
You know, I'm guessing that the higher amount was probably based on construction costs, and the lower about might be based on income generated.
A lot of times, what happens with the, we've seen this with a few other hotels, is if they had assessments done during the gas boom, just based on the revenue of the actual business of the market of that type of business.
Sure.
Same with warehousing, you guys saw a few of those earlier this year.
Right.
When the new appraisers come in and they say, "Well, that business has really declined," so the value of a property that's, you know, intended for that business also declines.
True. It's just, in my opinion, a shame to see somebody appealing in the midst of still receiving benefits that helped them to construct a project in the first place. I believe, I'm an advocate for LERTA programs, and there's ongoing discussions about the renewal of those programs that will otherwise expire at the end of the year, as you may be aware, but it just seems like it's counter to the spirit in which the LERTA program applied to them, that they would appeal even before their benefits from that program expired. Are there other comments or questions, Mr. Nubiallo?
Just, who is it that performs the formal appraisal?
I don't have that in front of me, who did it, but, Joe, do you remember? We had a, okay, we actually had to pay for a portion of that appraisal because the county's the one who picked the person who did it, but because we went through the court system and it appeared that we were going to actually have a lower assessment issued unless we did a formal appraisal, we actually paid the three taxing bodies together to have an appraisal done to get that up a little bit.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mrs. Katz?
Okay, so we're going to give them $18,000 back from the assessment. With the LERTA, how much money do you think they have saved, would you say, in the seven years? Would you have a ballpark figure of some sort?
I don't, but it's probably hundreds of thousands. It's very considerable because the first year, they would have received 100% off of their taxes of the improvement that was built, which is the majority of the property. But I can certainly get that information to you, but I don't know offhand.
I think this is rubbing us all the wrong way.
Well.
And I initially thought the same thing, you know, they're already in a LERTA program. If they're going to get a reassessment, maybe we should try to get rid of that altogether, but really, they're separate issues. What they're saying here is our assessment on our property is too high.
Mm-hmm.
It has nothing to do with, you know, getting a break on the improvements that they put on that property.
It proves that the, with the gas company, when they came in here and it was a boom, how foolish some people were. It really is, you know? So, I, you know, it just rubs me the wrong way. It really does.
Mr. Allison.
Which brings up a point, at least in my mind, would we be able to structure that into the LERTA, that during the LERTA period, we could restrict? The agreement would be, you get LERTA, but during that period, you cannot.
I, from my very limited research, and certainly we'd want to ask our solicitor, but I think that the issue is, it's been proven now that their assessment was unfairly too high. They were assessed at a higher value than their property's actually worth, so I don't think that really plays into the LERTA at all, and we can't say, you know, you're not allowed to legally get your assessment lowered to what it should be just because you have another tax benefit, would be my assumption.
And that makes, I mean, I think it's something that we should look into while we're reviewing whether or not LERTA should be extended. It doesn't hurt to look into it, but the logic of what Mr. Grimes is suggesting makes a whole lot of sense, because then what would, if you couldn't, then what would stop the county assessment office from saying, "Okay, well, we're going to give you a tax benefit over, you know, seven years, but we're going to, and you'll phase in the payments, but we're going to assess your property at a billion dollars so that in the second year, 10% of a billion is as much or more as what we would have gotten without the LERTA." I mean, that's implausible, but I see Mr. Grimes' logic there.
Although, the kind of LERTA agreement is, it's not, it's a benefit we're giving.
Right.
That's not required by law, and assessments are, may fall in a different legal, I don't know, I just think it's worth looking at.
Sure, I agree.
There should be some language in there that clarifies that issue.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it is a perfect, well, another of many, many examples that we've seen of a need for a county-wide reassessment. You know, property values are just so drastically different from what they should be, and this is a newer building, so the assessment's even more recent than what a lot of property owners see, and the disparity just keeps growing, and we never raise the property values when they're incorrectly assessed too low, but, you know, every year, we're having dozens and dozens that are lowered because they're too high, and it's just the disparity's growing far greater than it should.
Right, and they add that property values change at different rates, real property values change at different rates in different parts of the city, but of course, across the county, and undoubtedly, people are paying, some people are paying quite a bit more, whether it's in city taxes or school district taxes or in particular county taxes, than they otherwise would if the reassessment was done. Now, of course, I suppose there are some people that might be paying less, and that might be why there's pressure to not do the reassessment from some, but, you know, it's a shame that the state doesn't require a cycle where, you know, whatever it is, five years, 10 years, seven years, that it must happen on that cycle, rather than leaving it to the decisions, you know, on whatever a group of people feels like, and finally getting around to it. Any other comments, questions? All right, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slatter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, that resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution for a real estate refund for Mark Sowers. Mrs. Frank.
Real estate refund, Mark Sowers, Mossar Avenue.
Thank you. Motion and a second, please.
Go ahead.
Here, a motion and a second. Mr. Grimes.
This is a refund for $44.72. This is a property on Mossar Avenue that was destroyed by fire. This fire happened last month, so the refund would be for three months, October, November, and December, which were already paid of the city bill, and it's a refund for the difference between the previous assessed value and the assessed value after the fire.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slatter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, that resolution is approved, which brings us to the resolution, the final resolution for a real estate refund. Mrs. Frank.
Real estate refund for the Williamsport elderly housing on Edward Street.
Is there a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Here, a motion and a second. Mr. Grimes.
Thank you. This is for a refund in the amount of $7,227.23. This is for Williamsport elderly housing on Edwin Street. This was another lengthy appeal that happened, and it is retroactive for the tax year 2018, which for the city would start in January, so the change in assessed value, we're required to refund them the portion of what's changed for the full tax year.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slatter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing the extension of time for paving. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution authorizing the excavation of certain streets for a gas main replacement project by the city of Williamsport for UGI Utilities.
Or that one, that's fine.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one.
That's okay. Is there a motion and a second on the excavation?
So moved.
Second.
So, we're on the resolution related to excavation. Mr. Girardi.
Number 12, then.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, President Williamson and members of council. What you have before you is a request from UGI to do excavation work after November 1st, to start one of the projects up on the Cemetery Street project, and I have attached a sheet showing where this project's going to occur. UGI is under a mandate by the state, of course, to replace their gas lines by a certain time, and we did this last year with them on Penn Street. We allowed them to start a little early. What happens then, at the end of the year, next year, we can get it paved prior to the winter season's coming. I do have a representative here, if you have any questions of him, and this did go through Public Works, and the resolution was reviewed and approved by our attorneys.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Katz, for Public Works.
Oh, this was brought to us, and it was passed with a positive recommendation. We had a lengthy discussion about this. What's like, Mr. Girardi said, UGI is under a mandate to do all this work throughout the city, and next year, there's going to be a lot more work involved. So, I'm talking to everybody and going, talking with Mr. Girardi and Dave Columbine and also Adam Winder. One of the things that we want to make sure that is done with this is that before, when they are, before they are finished, they have got to put a base coat on before you leave the city. Okay? That is one of the things, so we don't have to hear from our taxpayers that are up in that end, that there is a problem. And we've, and talking about this, leaving a base coat, it really is beneficial to us to have that sit over the winter. It proves itself to be a better paving job, from what I understand from everybody.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay? So, we see no problem, but we really wanted to add on to this, that we wanted to see a base coat done, and I don't know how to do that, Austin.
Yeah, basically, we're looking at having six inches of base up to the top of the road, and then that'll hold over the winter time, and then comes springtime, it gets milled down, and then paved over top. So, you're looking for a six-inch additional base up to the top of the road.
And that's not what, in the resolution, which we wanted to see done.
Right. You're looking to put a condition upon that resolution.
This is a condition.
And UGI did agree to that at that time, so.
Do you have a motion?
Just, do we, can we, do we have to?
A motion to amend the resolution.
Okay. Jonathan, we need a motion to amend.
Motion to amend, and do you have the language? I'm sorry, I was talking to Mr. Allison.
Do you want to say something? Do we want to add in on this amendment that we had suggested or asked them to make sure that these two projects that we have in front of us now will be first attended in the coming season, in the coming season, rather? Is that something we need to put in this?
You can. You're wishing to have this milled and overlaid come spring, March, but typically, what we like to do is, on these projects, we like them to settle a little bit. As long as this base is prepared properly and done, it'll sit through summer, and then at the end of the season, we'll mill and overlay the whole project, if I'm correct, Adam.
So, we need more than, we need nearly a year for this to settle?
What? Mr. Winder.
If we have UGI piggyback on the city's contract, we, in our contract, you're not designated to the contractor, you have to be in the streets April 1st. We give them till July 31st to complete the project, so it wouldn't necessarily have to be completed by our contract till July 31st. If you wanted to amend it to states that they had to be done in the beginning of April, UGI would have to turn to their own contractor to mill and overlay.
We raised that question at the committee meeting, because in the past, and not necessarily with UGI, but with those who are responsible for working on our streets, that some of those projects have been left go for quite some time, and it wasn't necessarily picked up in the coming year, and Newbury's been subject to that particularly. We wanted to make sure that, you know, this is going to be addressed as quickly and obviously as timely as possible here, because if it's okay to get this through without putting it in the amendment, then I'm fine with that.
And at the very minimum, of course, the amendment could include and will be completed with a mill and top coat in 2019.
Yeah.
Right? And so, with that, with our suggestion, Mrs. Katz, we'll return it back to her to make the motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend to this resolution that UGI, before they leave for the winter, that there is a six-inch base coat on this project.
Does that give you adequate?
Is that enough?
Enough language? Mrs. Frank and Mr. White?
Yeah, that's fine.
And shall?
Do we want to do, and shall, and?
Shall complete milling, final milling and top coat during 2019. Is that your motion, Mrs. Katz?
Adam, is that what you want to see done?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clear, because these are the guys that do it.
Yeah, so that's your motion. Is that adequate for the record?
Just, I'm making sure of that.
Sure, absolutely. I know that's complicated.
Could we have that, could we have that read back?
If you would, please. There's a motion to, that's been made, too.
For UGI to complete its six-inch base coat and shall complete final milling and top coat before 2019.
No, no, it's a six-inch base coat before winter.
During 2018.
Of 2018.
During 2018.
Just during 2018, and then what you said, the rest?
And the mill is 2019.
Final milling and top coat?
Yes, it's 2019.
Right.
I hear a motion that seems to satisfy the solicitor and clerk. Is there a second?
Second.
Here, a motion and a second. Comments or questions on the motion to amend the resolution? One I would like to ask is, is that an acceptable condition for UGI?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion to amend.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is amended. Mrs. Katz, you're still on your report, I believe.
And, well, other than that, we've come to, we really had a great dialogue with UGI as far as what's going on for the rest of this year, of course, with this project, and also what's coming up in 2019. And this is why this is so vitally important to get done. They're trying to get a head start on everything that they have to accomplish in 2019. And we will have more information in the next couple of months as far as what streets, where they're going, and where they're heading. But there are a lot of huge projects going on in the city in 2019.
Yeah, approximately three miles of gas pipe are going to be in the city by next year, starting Memorial and Palos, will be starting March, April 1st, depending on how it will be spring, you know, the weather. So, that's kind of the emphasis to kind of make this done. You know, we have a busy construction season next year, and as everyone knows, the rain and everything out this year, it's going to make our construction easier. So, obviously, our main concern is public safety and efficiency of our gas within the city, so we want everything we can do to make sure that's our top priority. I appreciate you being able to answer this.
Thank you. And it's passed with a counsel with a positive recommendation.
Yes, it was.
Any other comments, Mr. Nubiallo?
I just want to remind some of our citizens that it's going to be some patience required before we get all these projects done. As was mentioned, UGI's under a mandate. We certainly understand what mandate means on this group of people here. So, you know, we want to pass on that hope and the expectation that people understand what we're going through here, and that I would suggest also that the Public Works Committee over the last several years has really upped the ability to communicate with UGI and some of our other providers as well. And that communication has put us kind of where we are today. We all would want to see things done faster, but we understand the circumstances that hold us up. Certainly, the past summer's been nothing but rain, and that slows up a lot of work, particularly outside work. But we've had a lot of input and feedback from UGI. They've been in constant touch with us routinely, and we're really grateful for the fact that they brought us up to where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Allison.
I'd just like to comment on the public safety aspect of it, having some experience with it. In, there's a lot of pipes in the streets, and if you have a water leak, sewer leak, it's not good, but you can deal with it. But if there's a gas leak, it's a different level of, a different animal, and I think everybody's aware of that. And the local here is very conscientious about that, and that's why it's mandated, and that's why the push is on to do it, to update those gas lines so that we don't have that kind of incident. And I think it's important to note as well, it is an inconvenience while it's being done, but it's become a significant part of our street paving, repaving in the city.
True.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we honestly have to say that. We haven't had a lot of money to put in streets, and we're getting miles repaved. So, we're getting two for the price of one. For the inconvenience, we're getting added safety and added convenience of better newly paved streets, so I think it's a win-win for us as well.
And to add on to what Councilman is talking about, what Adam does is, if we do have, they're doing a half-lane width paving, you know, milling and overlay, we'll go out and take a look at that road also, so we may add the other lane on to it. So, somebody's going to get a brand-new road at half the cost from the city because of the gas company. So, it does work out for both parties, and we've been trying to keep up on that, making sure that we can get it done, making sure somebody doesn't go back through and cut the road after we got done paving it, which everybody hates, and we really try not to have that happen.
Other comments or questions? Just one comment for the benefit of the public, and somebody will be able to answer this, especially with the Cool Leather coming in and the project starting on November 1st, I believe. How long will it take to replace the pipes, and how long should customers in the area expect to be without natural gas or gas access when the replacement is occurring?
I think if they are starting in November, I think they're looking at the end of November, somewhere at that timeframe to be done, about a 30-day project. As long as the weather and, you know, the rain holds off, and the plants are open, which they still should be, it should go pretty smooth.
Okay.
But honestly, the scope of the project is much less than what they are overall happening.
Right.
This is only about 1,600 feet of gas pipe replacement, and it's going to affect about 46 customers who have renewed services during the project, so.
Can you help define reduced services for me?
Well, renewed services.
Oh, renewed services.
Yeah, anything that is, they look like a year of the last service, the meat service criteria.
I just misheard the word. I thought you said reduced services. Because here's my question, it's getting colder. If somebody, if those 46 customers can expect to be out of heat for a week?
No.
No.
Okay. That's all I'm asking.
It'll be, basically, we have to work basically same day.
Okay.
They have to be off temporarily.
Mm-hmm.
We can't have people off. Yeah, when we leave at the end of the day, they have to be back.
Okay. That's good to hear, and I assume that.
That's why we really, honestly, we wouldn't tackle larger projects, it's kind of smaller in scope, and, you know, Mother Nature's unfortunately going to be our guide. Hopefully, we have to, you know, all like we have the last couple of years in the hot, you know, certainly, the rule of thumb is we'll make the base hot hatch till Thanksgiving time, which is kind of, as Ted said, we'll be able to hot hatch for six inches of base that we're talking about, in the timeframe, so we'll kind of hope the weather picks up this tomorrow.
Are those mains going to be direct buried?
Direct buried, yes.
Yep.
So, that's.
The first section that is not having services is going to be inserted.
Right.
The first maybe 100, 110 feet, and everything after that will be direct buried.
So, that's going to minimize the time the customers are going to be off as well, because it'll be, that'll be laid before the old ones shut off.
Oh, okay. I had to figure out what direct buried means, so thanks for the explanation.
It helps to have a gas main on there.
Yeah, absolutely.
An outstanding gas main.
We think so, too.
Really does.
You can't have it back. It's ours.
That's what my wife says.
Any final comments? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yeah.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and so that resolution is approved. We'll return to the prior resolution authorizing the extension of time for paving. Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing the extension of time for the paving of Arch Street project by the City of Williamsport for the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority.
Is there a motion a second to approve this resolution?
So move.
Here a motion a second? Mr. Girardi?
Yes, what you have is a request from the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority to extend their time to, instead of paving, excuse me, milling and overlaying before the end of this year or November, to do it spring. This would be the Arch Street project. It's from Glen Avenue to 4th Street. Rebecca Holiday was the engineer at one time here, and what she did particularly on this project was a little different, was she did require the water authority to do a scratch coat and do a top over the whole road. There was two main water lines, I believe, a 6 and a 12, I'm not sure, and there was also some gas work in this road. So, instead of just doing patchwork, which they normally do, they basically put base down, and they did a skim and a top coat. If you have driven the road, it's really not bad at all. I recommend that we wait and get a better project and a better job at the, come spring, instead of doing it this year. What happened was with the changes that occurred with the water authority, somehow or another, this one got pushed back a little bit. They really don't have the time to do it this year. They prefer to do it in spring. My recommendation, Dave Columbine's recommendation, I think Adam went up and looked at it, the road's in very good shape. If you travel it, you wouldn't even think it needs to be paved, to be very honest. This did go through Public Works for a recommendation, and the attorney also did review this.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Katz.
Yes, this was passed to full body of council with a positive recommendation. Our first inclination when this came to us was to say, no, because we, this should have been done this year. But when everything was explained, that this did get, it did fall through the cracks due to personnel changes and those circumstances. And I also went up and looked at the street. We rode on it. It really isn't, it's in much better shape than anybody could imagine.
Yes.
And to really get the full benefit of this for next year is going to be beneficial for us in the city. So, like I said, we voted on this with a positive recommendation to the full body, and next year, it should be finished and completed.
Thank you very much. Other comments, questions?
There was, if I'm correct, though, we, I think Public Works was wishing that this would be done, one of the first projects in spring, April, I'm looking at the time, April 1st is when they do it. You might want to give them like 45 days to have this done, because I know that was one of the things that you did talk about at Public Works. We didn't want this, spring is, spring is three months. You know, we didn't want it to wait three months, so it's up to city council if they wish to put that condition upon them.
We've been waiting, or Newberry particularly has been extremely patient themselves, and they have reason to be concerned about whether this is going to be done in a timely fashion with respect to some of the history up there over the last couple of years. So, we did raise the issue at that meeting to suggest that as early as possible, we want to tackle that.
So, we need to amend this.
Just to clarify, this one is not on, going to piggyback on the city project.
Correct.
Because of their grant source, they have to use the contractor to dug the road. So, you can't put a stipulation on the timeframe.
Okay. So, if, I think I've, while people were talking, found a place to put it in. If we amended it and they hereby resolved, I'm asking if this is what makes sense, that the water authority has granted an extension until 45 days after April 1st, 2019, for the permanent restoration of Arch Street?
That's correct.
Before.
Well, the extension is until the 45 days after April 1st.
Right.
If that makes sense to the solicitor, to, an extension to complete the project until 45 days after the first, April 1st, 2019. Mrs. Frank, did that give you what you needed?
45 days from April 1st, 2019.
I just said after, but, but yeah. If that's everyone's intention, I think that's a good place to put it in.
Thank you for that.
Okay, I heard, I made the motion, I heard a second. Comments or questions on that? Motion to amend? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the amendment carries. Other comments or questions on the resolution?
One of the reasons why these resolutions come to us is due to our own resolution as far as our timeframe goes, as far as the utilities coming and doing street projects after the fact. And we want to be so careful of what happens in the interim, because we really put a lot of time and effort in to preserve our city. So, what happened in Newberry, how many years ago, Don, was that two, three years ago?
About three years back, yeah.
And we don't want that to happen anymore. So, we put a lot of effort into what is going to happen with our streets. So, and, you know, for the public to understand, we do take this very seriously, and we do question everything to make sure that it has to be done this way.
Right.
And there are no other ways to do it, so that's, that's why this is done.
And to add on to what Mrs. Katz is talking about, under the ordinance and its ordinance, 620, 6245 excavation amendments, what's in there tells you also that we're required to go by the street restoration requirements, where basically, it's in-house policies. And one of the things that I have changed, and I did talk to Public Works about it, being the ordinance is approved by city council, if you want to deviate from that ordinance, it must go back through city council for their approval. In our street restoration requirements, it doesn't state that. It says it must be either approved by Public Works or the mayor. So, I have changed that. It goes through Public Works for the recommendation, and it goes to city council for the approval. So, from now on, anytime this happens, you'll be required, or it'll be brought in front of you either to approve or not approve.
And I want to thank, by the way, all the, all those involved over the last few years to help us figure this out, Public Works Committee, various members of the administration. If we were where we were before we started this, we would not be, we would have not seen the progress we made this year on our streets. And, you know, we weren't in a good shape when we began the year. We're in a much better shape now. But if we had not gone through all of those efforts, which didn't seem like they added up to a whole lot at the beginning, but now we're beginning to see the fruits of those efforts, we would have seen lots of small patches that would have made bad roads worse. Instead, we're beginning to see paved streets.
That's correct.
That are smooth, and we're not there yet, and we won't probably be fully where we need to be for a few more years, but we're not losing ground to the degree that we had been for so very long. And so, thanks to Public Works and the administration, members of the administration that have been involved in trying to think that set of issues through, and it's been over a several-year period.
Just to add to that, we've, Public Works in the past have worked to change the idea of the type of patching that is done when it's done.
Exactly.
And in the process of that, we came out with the idea of so many patches require full length.
That made a big difference in the T-patches, yeah.
We also upgraded the maintenance package from two years to five years.
Correct.
Which allows us that much more leeway than we had before, so.
Right.
We're seeing, as said, we're seeing some of that now, so.
Right, if we have the UGI going through and doing work, we get ahold of the water authority, sanitary authority, so that they can go back through and make sure that if we're going to repave this road at the end of, in fall, have them go out in spring to make sure that they're looking at their lines and so forth, because the last thing, like I said, we want to do is have somebody go back in and cut a road that we just paved.
One of the things, too, is the delineation of information between utilities.
Yes.
We prefer to see more project-based information coming to us, like coming college project, for example. That information is dominated by myself, the water company sending us projects, so we can lay our projects out, possibly to be non-credit for the city, along with the other facilities. So, sometimes sharing information, I don't think is, we're, we're starting to see growth there. Hopefully, when they're doing the, like coming college, unfortunately, we've already upgraded our infrastructure there, but that's an opportunity for us to share pay costs, share costs of excavation. So, you know, Adam's done a good job since he's been in this position, coordinating with me, so hopefully that'll continue, economically, medically, everybody.
That's very good to hear, and in the end, the beneficiaries are the taxpayers of Williamsport, the customers of UGI, the ratepayers of the Water and Sewer Authority. Turns out, those are all the same people. And so, we're all working for the same people.
We put a big effort into making sure the utilities sit at the table, and we discuss constantly where they're at, where they're coming from, and what we can all do to work together. And it has been, it has been great projects, it really has, because of the communication constantly. I mean, so many things have been cleared up, and we, when we look back at three, four years ago, where we were with UGI and where we are now, there's such great communication that, and we're getting the projects done correctly, and we're hearing, yes, less complaints from the taxpayers. And, and I know this is going to continue that way because, because of our communication when we all sit at the table at the committee meetings. And Adam does, like you said, a fantastic job, Dave Columbine, Joe Girardi, there is just, you know, it's a, it's a group effort, it really is.
Progress is being made. If there are no further comments, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, that resolution carries then, so we move on to the next.
Thank you.
Thank you much, very much, Mr. Girardi. We move on to the next item on the agenda, a resolution to designate an agent, a secret agent. Mrs. Frank.
Designation of agent, resolution for FEMA, dash 4292, dash DR, dash PA, dash 081, dash dash oh-eight-one dash eight-five-three-one-two dash oh-oh.
Are you sure that's not oh-oh-seven?
Adam made me do it.
Okay. Is there a motion, a second, to approve this resolution?
I move.
Second.
Just wondering, how are you this evening?
Good, good evening, how are you?
Secret agent, ma'am.
This is a resolution to authorize an agent for the City of Williamsport Streets and Parks Department to represent the department with FEMA. In twenty sixteen, October twenty-first and twenty-second, we had the significant storm that came through, caused a lot of damage. February second, twenty seventeen, Tom Silo brought a resolution forward of the same thing, designating himself. We opened up a project with FEMA where we received a little over thirty-two thousand dollars in reimbursement for the cost of manpower and machinery, et cetera, for that storm. It's now time to close that project out, which requires a signature on forms, and with Tom stepping from the position and me taking over, we now request that City Council would name me as an agent for FEMA.
Thank you, and this was reviewed by Public Works?
Public Works, yes. And I guess the one other thing I should say is, if something like that would happen in the future with this resolution, I would be automatically named to start the process.
Thank you. Mrs. Katz?
This, this came to us, and this was passed with a positive recommendation to the full body of council. Again, this is what happens when you have a change of personnel. And again, this slipped through the cracks, and thank God, we have good people working in, in Streets and Parks again, to, to catch this and taken care of. There is no penalties for this, okay, for, even though it is overdue.
Yes.
So there's no penalties. And now, Adam will have his name on it, so things like this won't happen again.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I, I have no questions about this, but while I have you up there, can I ask a, a couple of separate questions?
Sure.
I read with interest the article from the Public Works meeting this week, not about the work that you've been doing, but I, I forget, because it has changed so much so often. But is the, the engineer designate in training, or whatever his title is, he works underneath you, correct?
Yes.
So, given he nor the mayor is here, I guess you have to be put in a position to answer my question, I apologize for that.
Oh, I understand a bit, yeah.
I get it. So, and I, I've talked to Mrs. Katz about this a little bit, too, but I wanted to get some more information. So, we've got this very important application into DEP regarding the Graffiti Run, correct?
Yes.
And is my understanding, there was a presentation of basically ten percent of the residents affected by flooding and graffity run by Mr. Benner to the Public Works Committee.
Yes.
Do you happen to remember, were those the same thirty-three surveys that were completed by Ms. Myers and, and Mr. Fitzgerald? Or were those in addition, that he, that Mr. Benner completed in addition to the work that they had done?
That was thirty-three overall.
Thirty-three overall, but you're not, do you know who completed those thirty-three?
I can look, I don't have the actual Excel spreadsheet, but I'd be more than happy to get you the answer.
I appreciate that. And are you, have you had conversations with Ms. Benner about his plans for completing the remaining surveys of the two-hundred-and-eighty-nine residence parcels in that area?
Yes. Let me think of the best way I want to put this.
Again, I'm sorry, these are better questions for him than you, and, and I, I really don't mean to put you on the spot, because it, it was assigned to him by the mayor, and so it is his responsibility.
Yes. I guess the, the issue for me is my concern for that area.
Absolutely, as is mine.
The, Mr. Fitzgerald put together a very nice letter to submit to all the residents in that area, minus the thirty-three.
Sure.
He had submitted it to, I believe, Public Works and myself through an email. It is now on the Streets and Parks letterhead with my name at the bottom. Because I am a person that believes things need to be personalized, I'm going to take the time to put every individual resident's name at the top of the letter. Instead of it saying, "Dear Resident," it will say each individual person's name. I'm going to hand sign every one of them, I'm going to hand deliver every one of them one night.
Wow.
With a self-addressed envelope backed us.
Okay.
I've got multiple reasons why, I've talked to numerous residents that live in that area, I've got a few of them that if they call for heavy rain, like, call for heavy rain Saturday.
Right.
Friday morning, I can expect about six phone calls that they're going to say, "Adam, are you going to be out there watching?"
Because they trust you.
Yes. I've talked to numerous residents out there when we're out there waiting for the rain or during the storm. So, once, I, I'm a personal-type person, so I would rather go out and talk to them myself.
I, I can understand why you would want to do that, because you take responsibility for, basically, you care about the people of the, the city and you're taking responsibility.
Right.
Because the job has to get done.
That's a good way to put it. My, my next statement was going to be, because, at the end of the day, it reflects back on me as the department head, the entire city, and my department.
And, and let me thank you for that. That, the, the citizens, well, maybe they now know the kind of person you are if they don't know you personally, by the, the sense of responsibility and the caring that you have for them and on their behalf. If they're watching, I'm sure they would want me to thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
If there's anything council can do to help you complete the survey process, because that is so critically important to get to the next step, which is a step that can really make a difference, one, for the citizens of that community, that neighborhood, and two, for the taxpayers of the whole city, because it takes the burden of the solution off of their shoulders. If there's anything council can do to assist you, please ask.
I definitely appreciate it. I know Councilwoman Katz has offered to help put letters and envelopes and whatever she can do, so I appreciate everything.
And I'm, I'm, have a little bit of experience with surveying and, and that sort of thing, so if there's any advice or anything else I can do personally to help you with that, let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Mr. Allison?
The, the two-hundred or so surveys that went out, at what point were they supposed to be, was there a, a date they were all supposed to be out by?
The date kept getting pushed out further and further. If I remember correctly, the, the survey has to be in by February?
By February? It has, that, it has to be, every, all the paperwork has to be in by February?
Right.
Not the survey, but the, the paperwork.
I, I'm a firm believer in don't put off till tomorrow what can be done today.
This is, this is dated now. This has to be done by November.
What was the original date that they were all supposed to be on?
The original was the end of September?
Yeah. Yes.
I don't believe there was a date.
Okay.
When we talked to DEP and, and Chelsea, when she was still here, this is when, you're right, it was supposed to be September, because we wanted to work on, get this out, and we wanted to be one of the first in's with this. Okay, and it just kept on getting pushed, and when Chelsea left, obviously, the job didn't get done. And I did try calling Chelsea, but her mailbox is full. Like some other people that I know.
The other question I had was, the thirty-three that are in, are they spread out throughout the, the survey area, or are they concentrated up towards Graffiti Run?
I am not sure.
Okay.
The other thing I can get back to you on.
I know some of the houses that are right up have changed hands. There might, it might take some digging to find out how much, how many dollars can be accounted for that were spent in those, some of those places. So I'm not sure how we, well, I guess the survey indicates how long they've been.
It's a ten-year period, to go back a ten-year period.
Yeah.
Within any of your, the homeowners.
But if they haven't been there.
Right. And, and that's one of the problems. You know, and we're hoping that, as we discussed, maybe the neighbors know, you know, whatever, we, you know, go in that route. I mean, ten years is a long time.
It is, yeah.
Some of us can't remember what happened last month, you know, and it's, uh, trying to figure it out.
I'm optimistic a little bit, because out of thirty-three homes plus the city's expenses, we've hit a million and a half, as I read in the paper. Well, I don't know that you have to get to eighty-nine, but, because if you get to a hundred-and-twenty-five.
Correct.
You're going to hit five million.
Well, Jason just found something else.
At some point, you can extrapolate to the full number.
Jason just found something else, what did he find? A bridge or something?
Yeah.
Oh, the, um...
What did he find? Which is adding more money onto this.
The Highland Terrace Bridge, you questioned when it was replaced. I believe it was replaced in two thousand and four, which puts it beyond the ten-year mark.
Oh, okay. That's what we talked about, okay.
Mr. Allison, anything else?
We're trying, we're trying to get it.
Any other comments, Mr. Girardi?
Adam, I forget, what, we didn't include the low-neck in there yet, did we?
Yes.
Yes.
They were around one-point-one million.
They were a million dollars themselves.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the one thing that I did not include was straight time, because we don't, we don't log straight time, but if there's anything that creates overtime, we have what's called an event sheet, so that we can log in what, how many hours, what the cost was to the city, whether it's for a parade, storm event, tree down. So now I have to go back through and look at every storm and figure out the possible hours we did during straight time hours, which will increase it, I don't want to say significantly, but quite a bit.
Is there a, is there any assistance that you're offering homeowners who might not have good documentation but can remember?
They are allowed to just estimate.
Okay.
DEP said it could be an estimated number, that it didn't have to be something defined or you didn't have to have receipts or nothing to that nature.
So if, if they remember, I don't remember what, you know, if they're thinking, "I don't remember what I spent, but I had to get a new refrigerator and ran a, a, you know, shop vac and some fans and replace some carpet," it might have been ten thousand dollars. That's good enough. And it, it might be important, because some people might be intimidated trying to come up with a, a precise number. So that's good for them to know. Any other comments? Mr. Allison?
Would this include any work that they've done just to, to dry out their basement?
Yes.
So, you know, if they installed something down there?
If you bought a dehumidifier.
Right.
You could put that on there.
Right.
And, I mean, the Graffiti Run area is, in my opinion, a large area, because if Graffiti Run is coming over, that tells me when you get closer to Hawthorne Avenue, that the catch basins cannot take the water, so it is affected by Graffiti Run. So, I've really got to look at what they considered the Graffiti Run area when they put their surveys out. Maybe we expand it a little further just for that reason.
Thank you.
Makes good sense. Any other questions? Thank you for letting us go off track a little bit on the FEMA designation, but I, I know it's important in a lot of people's minds, and, and now we're able to better communicate what the plan is on making sure that we get there by that February, February timeframe.
Well, the, the deadline is November thirtieth for the survey.
Oh, for the survey, okay.
For the survey's November thirtieth.
All right. So...
Mark, please put that in the paper, okay?
And encourage, please encourage people to participate, because this is the fastest, best way that we are aware of that can solve, create a long-term solution for the problem in that area.
What about Cochran? Has, has that, have they had, do you know if they've had to make any repairs or anything due to the flooding?
I know the playground area has been flooded numerous times. I'm going to have to check and see if...
Would that count, would they count, though?
Yes.
The school district would count if they had?
Yes, because a, a portion of Graffiti Run actually is the one that comes down through by the school. The one at Freedom Road is actually the unnamed tributary, but they merge together south of the school. So yes, that would be considered.
So it's, if nobody has reached out to the school district, then I think it would be a good idea to do so. Any other comments? Mrs. Frank, on the, I'll remind everyone, we're on a resolution to designate an agent for FEMA.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, that resolution carries.
Thank you.
Next, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is certificates of appropriateness for this historic district. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items. First at four-twenty-one, I'm sorry, at nine-sixty-three Vine Avenue, there's removing of shingles and gutters, replacing those and doing some painting. At nine-sixty-five Vine Avenue, painting. Ten-twenty-four West Fourth Street, prepping painting, including Monachello Rose and Somerville Red and Queen Anne Pink. Sounds lovely. At ten-twenty, ten-twenty-two Vine Avenue, we have some prepping and painting of existing colors, but no names, so we don't know what they are. At six-ten, six-twelve Gray Street, constructing a wooden mailbox or using a salvaged metal mailbox, I think at the owner's discretion. The owners of the property at the corner of Maynard and West Third Street apparently want to install some light fixtures. And three-twenty-two Campbell Street, there's demolishing a blue-sided addition, constructing a new addition, roofing it, siding it, soffits molding, et cetera, adding windows, installing an exit landing and removing plywood from blocked-in rear window. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve these certificates of appropriateness?
I move.
Second.
Hearing motion, a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those certificates are approved. Next item on the agenda is except for filing, we have the Public Works Committee meeting minutes of September eleventh, twenty eighteen, Public Safety Committee meeting minutes of July thirty-first, twenty eighteen, ERC meeting minutes of October second, twenty eighteen, and the Finance Committee meeting minutes of July seventeenth, twenty eighteen. Can I have a motion, a second, to accept these for filing?
I move.
Second.
Hearing motion, a second. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those are accepted for filing. Next item on the agenda is announcements. We will be having an executive session this evening on the matter of personnel. The next regularly scheduled City Council meeting will be held on Thursday, November eighth, at seven-thirty PM here in Council Chamber, chambers. Other upcoming meetings include Monday, October twenty-ninth, at noon, is the Planning Commission. On Tuesday, October thirtieth, at three-thirty PM is ERC. On, I'm sorry?
Lurda.
Ah, Lurda. On Monday, November fifth, at four PM is Recreation. Tuesday, November sixth, at one PM is Finance Committee, two-thirty PM is Public Works, and three-thirty PM is Public Safety. That brings us the, to the end of our agenda. Are there comments from members of council? Hearing none? Well, let me just say, I encourage everyone to vote in the upcoming election for whatever you choose to vote for.
Is, is the Halloween carnival this weekend? It was last week.
Mr. Slaughter?
We just think that there was, the Halloween carnival switched at the last minute, so we have to thank Adam, Streets and Parks, Jess and everybody. It was supposed to be at the Hiawatha, but wind and weather and everything, we just, Jess and Adam, I think, decided to move it indoors at the last second. It went really, really well, it was a phenomenal turnout. I don't know, probably, how many kids would you say? Maybe three or four hundred? Yeah, so, for a last-minute switch, literally, it went really, really well, so, and Adam has some good ideas in Jess for next year, so. I'm glad to say that, buddy.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Any comments from the administration or the treasurer? Hearing none, any comments from the general public? Please cover the podium, name and address for the record, three minutes on a matter of city business.
Scott Miller, eight-twenty-two Tucker Street, Williamsport. Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and others. So, Dr. Williamson, you have a doctorate in political science. Was it in college that you learned to conspire and collude in secrecy to usurp our form of government, or is it called a coup? Exactly when do you plan on informing the public as to how many long and hard hours you and others worked to draft this proposal on changing the city's form of government before you brought it to the attention of the full body of City Council and to the citizens of Williamsport? You were fully transparent on all of this, weren't you? I suppose you figured you only needed to fool just enough of the people for just too long enough to slip it through on an off-election, low-voter turnout year. Maybe you're right, but I certainly hope not. I, for one, certainly hope your proposal and the home rule measure as presented fail I for one certainly hope your proposal and the home rule measure as presented failed miserably on the ballot on November 6th, 2018. Further, I see the Sun Gazette did their usual lousy job of informing the public as to what these two ballot questions were all about. Where were the dissenting views on the two-ballot proposal? I wasn't interviewed by the fake news. Speaking of which, I've yet to talk with anyone that was surveyed by either of the two commissions, except for city workers and people in the know. Huh. I guess if you want the answers you desire, you only talk to those in your small clique[1733.32]